Alex, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear.
All right, thank you.
Yep, I can see the presentation. It's on YouTube. Good. Check.
Okay, tracking through.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, thanks.
Good morning. Before we start the meeting, I just wanna, number one, thank everyone who submitted their testimony on this subject. It's very diverse, and we appreciate all of your, all of your concerns. Also, I would like to state that if you see any of us up here looking at our computers or writing things down, we are, we are just doing our own research on the particular subject matter. So there has been some questions in the past about folks perceiving that we weren't listening to them, but, but we certainly are. The other concern I want to address is that we're all volunteers up here, okay? We do not have any specific interest. No one pays us. This is our civic duty. And I just wanna make that clear, that there's no ulterior motive to anyone up here, nor do we have any financial gain out of the outcome of these meetings. Okay, with that said, this is the continuance of special meeting of the Winware Planning Commission, which originally convened on November first, two thousand, twenty twenty four, will now come to order. It is Thursday, February sixth, twenty twenty five. The time is nine oh two AM. This meeting will be streamed live on YouTube. This meeting will end at noon. So, good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to come to the Winware Planning Commission meeting. Please keep your testimony respectful and delivered with aloha to me as chair. Personal attacks and disruptive behavior will not be permitted at the meeting. It may be paused or ended by the chair at any time if necessary to maintain decorum. All public testimony is limited to three minutes. We ask each of you to please respect that time limit so we can hear from as many of you as possible. So that's another very important point, that, you know, sometimes we have a lot of testimony, and three minutes is the time allotted to everybody. And we do that to, number one, make sure we hear a lot of people, or as many that we can, and to equalize everyone's time. If you sent us written testimony, know that we have read it, so please do not repeat it. If you find that your testimony is repetitive of others, of what others have said, or what you have said at a prior meeting, please consider simply testifying that you agree with previous statements rather than repeating them. That will allow us to recognize you and hopefully complete our agenda. I will now introduce the chairs. So we have Vice Chair Chantel Perrin.
Good morning.
Commissioner Wayne DeLuise. Commissioner Gordon Takaki. Commissioner, Commissioner Lauren Baylog is absent and excused, and I am Chair Louis Daniel Lee III. We have quorum to hold this meeting. Also present, our Deputy Corporate Counsel Dakota Cody Friends is covering for Deputy Corporation Counsel Susannah Tapulia, who is the attorney for the commission and is present to advise the commission on legal matters. And Planning Director Jeffrey Darrell is present to advise the commission on planning matters should you have any questions.
Good morning.
Thank you, thank you. The Planning Director is representing the Planning Department and is not a member of the Planning Commission. Commissioners, please confirm that you had the opportunity to review materials related to the agenda being reviewed today. So has everyone been able to read all the testimony? Yes, okay, very good. I have noted that each commissioner has verbally confirmed having the opportunity to review materials related to the agenda item being reviewed today in all submitted testimony. They have a little housekeeping, please turn off or silence your cell phones. Public restrooms are located outside in the middle of the building on the right. If there's anyone here in person who would like to testify, please fill out the yellow sign-up sheet at the staff table over by the door. Also, if you have a written testimony that has not been sent in earlier, you may submit it to staff now. Introduction and overview. The purpose of this public meeting is to afford all interested persons a reasonable opportunity to comment on the County of Hawaii General Plan twenty forty five, final recommendation draft dated July twenty twenty four. And the commission to review the draft plan and provide its recommendations to the county council by March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. The commission will be holding meetings from now until March twenty twenty five to review the draft general plan. The format of these meetings will include staff presentation, followed by testimony, and then commissioners question staff, discussion, and action on the draft plan. The Planning Department staff shall provide presentation of each section of the draft plan. For example, today, they will present the Sustainable Development and Resilient Communities, the Transportation Access and Mobility, Public Utilities, Public Facilities, and Service Housing for All in Integrative Systems Section. The public may testify in any section of the draft plan at each meeting until the public testimony is closed. After hearing public testimony, the commission may ask questions of the staff. As it is November fourth, twenty twenty four meeting, the commission made a motion to provide a favorable recommendation to the county council on the draft plan. This motion will remain open for several months until the last meeting on the draft plan, allowing commissioners to make subsidiary motions if they want, or change the draft plan by adding, deleting, or replacing language. At the last meeting for review of the draft plan, the commission will vote on the main motion to forward the recommendation to county council. Okay. The, the draft general plan in today's agenda can be found on the Planning Commission website by searching online for Hawaii County Planning Commission, or going to the website address posted on the agenda. Okay, staff presentation. We will start with a presentation by planning staff. Commissioners, please take note of questions you wanna ask the staff since we will reserve our questions until after hearing public testimony. Staff, please introduce yourself before beginning your presentation. Thank you very much.
Aloha, Chair. Thank you, and aloha, commissioners. My name is April Serprenot with the Planning Department, and I have with me Janice Hatta. So I will be giving this presentation today. So give me just a moment to pull up the PowerPoint and share screen, and we will get rolling. Okay, here we go. So we are here today on Thursday, February sixth. Then, as Chair mentioned, we will be finishing the Sustainable Development section, specifically talking about various capital services within, within the plan. We received a lot of public testimony about our outreach and meetings, including the evening meetings that have been conducted throughout this process. And so I'm, I added in a few slides that are reminders. These, some of these slide, these slides are in previous presentations, but we don't do it at every meeting. But we thought it relevant for this particular meeting, given the public testimony we've received in the last few weeks. So we have conducted a number of different types of workshops. Community, we've gone out to community groups and things we called road shows. That means when we were invited to another community's meeting, we went to their meeting at their time and gave presentations and answered questions and things like that. We also went to, conducted our own action committee meetings, as well as numerous community meetings. Most of those were in the evenings or on weekends. There are only a handful that were not. For example, in this last twenty twenty four outreach, we had heard a lot about, we can't do evenings because we have to get home to feed the kids and the family. Or we can't do weekends because we're doing soccer or baseball or things like that. And so we did host two of our workshops in twenty twenty four that were during the weekday. We understand that's not convenient for everyone, but we are trying to give as much of a variety of meeting days and times in order to reach as many people as possible. The other thing that we've done throughout this process are press releases. We don't do a press release for every single meeting, because then it would, it would be too much. But we have done press releases. We did at the beginning of all of this outreach and noting our, the schedule that we've gone through. And what that means to do press releases is it goes to all of the TV stations, all of the radio stations, all of the newspapers and media outlets that are kept through the mayor's office. And so those press releases are done through the mayor's office. We draft them. We work with the mayor on some of the language, and then they go out as press releases. We have had, we do have public radio announcements that have been done on various radio stations. We've had newspaper articles in the different newspapers. We send them out on all of the listservs. So we have something called listservs with the county where people can sign up. We have it for the general plan and for all of our different meetings within the Planning Department, but other departments have that as well. And so in sending out notices for meetings and such, we have sent it to all of the listservs within the county, not just what the Planning Department manages, in an effort to try to reach as many people as possible. So we just want you to understand the efforts that we've gone through over this, over this timeframe of the overall project. As a reminder, since two thousand fifteen, which is when this comprehensive review process started, the general plan, which I'll show you in just a few minutes, noted, note, currently notes that this process has a very specific way that we go through this process that's in the two thousand five general plan in chapter sixteen of the general plan. One of the things it states is that we should have gone through this nine-year process that we've done in three years. We missed that, and we understand that. We also had a lot of things going on during that time, such as lava, change in administrations, a lot of different things, which we've talked about in previous meetings, but just as a reminder. In two thousand nineteen, we had a public draft that came out and did extensive public outreach, which was primarily draft policy language. We knew it was not a complete plan, but we wanted to at least get a feel from the community on the language that was being drafted at that time, as well as the maps. We received tons of input and information. We took that, compiled it into a new draft that came out in twenty twenty three, which added a lot of narrative, which you see in the current two thousand five general plan. We added new narrative that was pertinent to those sections of that draft. Again, extensive public outreach and workshops and public meetings, community meetings, where we received more input. We made some additions and some changes to the draft again, based on all of that input. We added the glossary, for example, in the front of the document and the acronyms, the list of acronyms, so people could understand what is referenced in the document. And then you have the final release, which is the recommend, recommended draft you have in front of you today. Just as a reminder, and this was also in some early presentations that we did with both of the planning commissions and in all of the workshops, is the latest recommended draft was released as required in the two thousand five general plan. That's chapter sixteen point one, little four. And we released that draft for additional comments. We did more workshops and community meetings. We then, in accordance, again with the general plan, had to stop public comment as part of the process. We did continue to take some public comment even after September twenty sixth, as long as we could make this deadline, which we did for October twenty fifth, where we only had thirty days from here to here to submit, the Planning Director to submit the document to the Planning Commission. Now it's with you all, as you well know, for review and recommendation, which will then be followed. You all have a hundred and fifty days from October twenty fifth, which is March twenty fourth. That's your drop dead date to forward your recommendations to the county council, who will then review all of those recommendations, as well as anything from the director, all of the public comments that have been collected to date. And they will deliberate and make changes and ultimately adopt the final document. So we will start off in the transportation element of the document. So just as a reminder, we have covered land use in a previous, in previous meetings. We'll now go through, as Chair had pointed out, the other infrastructure sections related. So the goal of the transportation and access and mobility section is that each community is connected by the multimodal and modernized transportation network that provides a system for safe, efficient, and comfortable movement of people and goods. There are a number of objectives. We're not gonna touch on all of them in this presentation, but there are a number of objectives that cover active living corridors and public access. Active living is like our urban trails, such as we have out front at Bayfront, the urban multi-use trails or paths that are in our urban areas. Mass transit, roadways, of course, and then our transportation terminals, such as airports and harbors. So with the objective to increase transportation connectivity, just some examples of policies and action is to ensure native Hawaiian access rights that are clearly expressed in county code policies and procedures. Another policy, seventeen point three, is prior to disposing of leasing or transferring public lands through the county that property management procedures, the county shall assess, document, and protect access to existing active living corridors that are located on county-owned parcels. An action related to this, and I should point out too, that these two policies in part come from the two thousand five general plan. And also some are referenced through the HRS, the Hawaii Revised Statute, state statutes. An action related to this is to develop and adopt a program to establish public access to historic trails and modern active living corridors and facilities that provide an island-wide route and connection to major destinations. So again, this is just an effort to provide that native Hawaiian rights for their access, but also to provide multimodal connections between places of residence and places of work so that people have an alternative. They don't have to necessarily get in their cars if they choose not to. But that is a personal choice for all residents and visitors. Another example related to reducing vehicle miles, similar to what I just stated, but nineteen point four, is to increase mobility for minors, non-licensed adults, low-income elderly, and people with mobility limitations through prioritization of alternative means of transportation. This means not only multimodal opportunities, but also transit, paratransit, things like that that are more accessible to our people with the highest need, that don't have a car or are not able to drive, that they have as much access as anyone else here. So an action is to continue to adopt the County Street Design Manual as the county's complete street program and policy. Again, this is a document that prescribes a lot of different options and opportunities. It's a toolbox of options, if you will, that would help with having creative and innovative designs of our streets to allow for transportation for all users. Also, in the transportation area, under the objective to incorporate green infrastructure to reduce stormwater runoff, an example of a policy is to prioritize roadway drainage improvements in flood-plone, excuse me, flood-prone areas. Again, this is a big issue when we had, have big rains. We just had one last week. There are many areas that were closed off of our roadways due to flooding, especially also in the Kona. especially also in the Kona areas that, that received a lot of rainfall. We, we need to improve our drainage systems and look for more natural solutions also, so that we're not just dependent on the pipes for moving that stormwater, but also we have more what we call percolation, where the rain absorbs into the roadway and has more opportunity for that. It also lowers the amount of debris and pollution that naturally exists on our roads from being rubber that burns off of our tires, fuel that gets spilled, things like that, that all gets into our runoff water. So one action is develop green infrastructure standards, including right-of-way landscaping, low-impact development and drainage. So to shift over to public utilities, our communities are adequate. The goal of this section is that our communities are adequately served by sustainable and efficient public infrastructure, utilities and services based on existing and future growth needs, sound design principles and effective maintenance practices. Again, there are a number of different objectives in this section that, that cover drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, electric and renewable energy, as well as telecommunications. Under the section, under the objective to improve the efficiency, reliability and sustainability of essential infrastructure systems, there are a few examples of policies to provide utilities and service facilities that minimize total cost to the public and effectively serve the needs of the community. Another one is utility facilities shall be designed to complement adjacent land uses and minimize pollution or disturbance of the natural environment and natural resources. And thirdly, in this example, to encourage the clustering of developments to reduce the cost of providing utilities. Again, clustering, I just want to point out, because we've received a lot of testimony about cluster development. It has been in our code and in our current general plan for more than twenty years. It is a tool that landowners can use. It is not required by any stretch, but it is an option that some choose to use. For example, if they have some sensitive areas on their property, and let's say they would be allowed under the zoning to subdivide into twenty-five lots, but they have some critical habitat, let's say, for example, that they're not allowed to disturb. A clustering development option would still allow them to divide a smaller section and have smaller lot sizes within the, the, the developable area to still get twenty-five parcels that they could then provide back to the community. So it's an option that does reduce cost of roadways. When the, when there's cluster development there, you can just easily imagine that the road is shorter or smaller, the utilities don't have to go as far. And so it does reduce the cost for the overall development. Again, this is an option, it is not a requirement. And it's been available for over twenty years in the code and the current general plan. Under the objective to advance policies, programs and initiatives for public and or private investment in broadband and telecommunications infrastructure. So a policy example is to develop and support a program of free public use broadband services at appropriate county-owned facilities, mass transit facilities and other community anchor institutions. An example of an action is to pursue partnerships and funding for broadband initiatives and deployment. So a lot of this is actually already happening, but one of the ideas, and especially for broadband, is there are many communities in our, on our island that do not have access to cellular service, do not have access to any sort of internet and need or want that for some reason, be it for their business or their personal use. And so they do go to libraries and other locations, public facilities like that. And so it is the county's intent to try to provide, provide that kind of connectivity at all of our public locations, so that members of the public who do not have or cannot have that type of connection at their home, that they have it at least in the public areas and public places. So related to public facilities and services, the goal is that our communities are safe and protected and have access to integrative health, education and social services to support a high quality of life for all residents. Our communities are adequately served by sustainable and efficient public infrastructure, utilities and services based on existing and future growth needs, sound design principles and effective maintenance practices. Again, there are a number of objectives here. We'll go over just a few related to protective services, that's fire and police, civil defense, solid waste, which is our solid waste management, education, recreation and community health and wellness for the well-being of all of our residents. Under the objective that park facilities are located within a ten-mile walk in urban areas and ten-minute drive in rural communities, a policy example is to facilitate and prioritize co-location of schools, parks and senior centers to promote interactivity between community members of all ages. Again, this is an opportunity and a public service that the county provides. The ten, the ten minutes and the, and the ten-minute walk or the ten-minute drive, those are already standards that the Parks Department uses as a goal. It's very difficult to meet that in many, in many places. We don't have, we, we know we don't have as many parks as we would like to have to serve all of our community members, but it is a standard that is in place in making sure that all of our residents have that opportunity to interact in some sort of a park or recreational location near where they live or work. An action is to develop local citizen leadership and participation in recreation planning, maintenance and programming. Again, this is a program that the Parks Department utilizes called Friends of the Park, but there are other opportunities too, related to community groups working with the Parks Department to best facilitate having recreational facilities in their area. Related to housing, the goal is that residents have access to adequate and affordable housing to meet the needs of the population and provide equitable opportunities for housing flexibility and mobility. The objectives for this section are related to, to diversify and expand housing, manage the existing housing and then to increase the affordability of that housing, so the people who live here can afford to live here with the income that they have. So an example of a policy is to reduce the cost and time of processing land use and construction applications, particularly for affordable housing projects. Again, this is an opportunity to try to streamline the overall process that includes the regulations as it pertains to housing developments. An action is to amend the land use and building regulations to reduce cost and streamline the processing of affordable housing applications and facilitate concurrent applications when possible. So that means when several different applications are needed for a particular development, to try to streamline and have them go in together as much as possible, so that the overall length of time is reduced. Pertaining to integrated systems, the goal is that we employ integrated systems that are efficient, equitable and organized to facilitate coordination and collaboration. So one of the objectives is to maintain fiscal integrity, responsibility and efficiency. A policy example is, is that projects involving more than one department assess, assess, one department's assets shall be coordinated to define scoping, design and construction needs. An action related to this is conduct cost-benefit analysis for new facilities and replacement. A great example of this is our roadways, as many of you can imagine. And if you think about it, our roadways end up being sort of the corridor, not only for our transportation, but also for our utilities. Our electricity is along our roadways. Our wastewater is typically under the center of our roadways. Water lines are in our roadways. So much of our utility systems happen along our roadways. So when something's going to happen by one department, that's going to interrupt the roadway construction of some kind, the idea is to better coordinate and facilitate that coordination with other departments to see if there's a need by a different department, so that it all happens at the same time, reducing the overall cost. So you're not digging up the road this year to do one thing and digging up the road next year to do a different thing. A great example here in Hilo is Keahve Street rehabilitation that was recently done in the last year, completed last year. The initial project was to redo the roadway and the sidewalks and the curbs, which they did. But what was not in their budget is wastewater and water. And the planning department knew through all of the work that we had done in downtown Hilo and the urban design plan that we have for downtown Hilo, that these other utilities were needed as well. So we pulled teams together. We talked with water to see if they had funding that they could use to upgrade the water system. We talked to wastewater to see what funding they had to upgrade their, their system. And then they were able to combine those three projects in one construction effort, and it worked really well. So that's all I have to review in terms of our presentation. This is a reminder of our website that is available. Again, all of our public meetings are on the planning department website. I'm happy to pull that up either now or after public testimony to show you or anyone, but it looks like this image on the left. And then we also have the interactive draft and maps, which are on the, there's a link to, to the website on the right. There's a link on the left here that takes you here if, if people want to interact with the maps and things like that. So I'm happy to go through with that with you. If there, I don't know if you want to take questions now, Chair, if you want to wait until after public testimony.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I think we'll wait after public testimony. Okay, so again, thank you for that presentation. We will now begin public testimony portion of the meeting. First, first we'll hear from individuals providing in-person testimony. Next, we'll hear testimony from individuals joining us via Zoom. We will proceed with this process until all public testimony has been heard. Staff, are there any individuals present to provide in-person testimony?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. We have seven in-person testifiers at this time. The, the first two, I'll call two up at a time. The first two are Wendy Keanu and Donna Grabon, Grabow? Grabow, if you could please come up to the table, I can swear you in. Please turn on the microphone in front of you. Right, yep, you got it. Please raise your right hand.
Who, is it me?
Both of you, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth today before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and the town you reside on, reside in, I'm sorry. And then you can begin, you'll have three minutes and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. You can go ahead and start.
Yes. Good morning, my name is Donna Grabow, and there are many reasons to reject the entire general plan two thousand and forty-five. And we need to oppose the, this plan to protect private property and stop restrictive new laws to, that will inevitably control us. There's a part of the plan that mentions agricultural growth, but the details of sustainability are not feasible. Farming expansion needs land, workers and machinery, all which are limited. Dependence on imported food will still persist, so I, I question that part of the plan. It's, it, it seems like it was written for United, the mainland United States, where they don't have problems of jungle growth and the super weed that's called cane grass. There's things like that, that, that are making farming very difficult. In the general plan, it's been discovered that a new map was either tampered with or mistakenly mislabeled in an area that is actually urban land. The new map has somehow been re-designated as conservation land. That might have been changed by now, but this sleight of hand would give the state a green light to prohibit homes, farming or building. And I'd like to say something about the wifi. Already, everybody has wifi here. There might be some up in the mountain, a ranch or something that doesn't have it, but their cell phones, they do have internet. And so when they talk about the, you know, the, the, how good conductivity growth will be for the island, we, we got to consider the EMF pollution that's going on right now, the amount of electromagnetic. So on the last note, keep Hawaii the way it is. There are already plenty of forest reserves, Hawaiian public lands that are protected and lots of well-planned parks, beautiful beaches, waterfalls, a free zoo, botanical gardens, all of which are available to the public. So already, this is a wonderful place to live. The general plan is not the only choice. There are much better ideas and clean technology to be considered. And mahalo for this opportunity to speak, I kept it short.
Aloha, my name is Wendy Keanu and I reside on the Kial side. And I have not, I have to be honest, I have not read the whole master plan, but I would just like to say that as we plan in part of this master plan, that we think, I know we are thinking of the future, but also do we, as we're looking at the different maps and the different locations, have we really done research to make sure that these areas are done correctly or labeled correctly? Have we gone out into the community and asked some of the residents, what do you know about this land? What do you, because you could have a kapuna there that could give you like a wealth of information about that land or the property, as well as the transportation. I feel like we are moving forward in, in baby steps to provide transportation for the needs of the residents. And do we, how much of that in, for kapuna as well as other residents that live out in the more rural areas? Just for example, like Ocean View, how are they going to be best served in this master plan? Or are we just kind of looking at, I'm just saying Kona or Hilo, I'm just throwing that out. Also, sorry. Also, if we are labeling this, these different parcels or properties or areas, that we do it correctly, because we don't want to down the road in twenty years have made an error and then it would cost the taxpayer, taxpayers money to redefine and re-correct that area. I appreciate the person speaking on behalf of her area, but I always would have also liked to hear or see, sometimes you go to meetings and people give really awesome testimonies to what their ideas, but as a whole, we don't hear what those testimonies, and there could have been great ideas to add to. And I think that somehow can we see that, what, not given the names, but what are their testimonies, what are their views? And it could be well-used down the road as part of the planning. Now, thank you for your time. Now, thank you for your time. I, this is my first time doing it. And I told my granddaughter that part of the mantra was to be brave. And so this is my first time and I appreciate all of your attention to each and every one of us. And I hope that, that you will see with your eyes what would be best for the community as a whole, that you hear everybody's ideas and suggestions, and that your heart, that you follow what you, it may not be, it may be three of you with, with this one idea, but you know, see it through.
You have thirty seconds left.
But thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your next two testifiers are Kalei Kailekini and Shailene Fahey. Kalei, if you could come to the table and Shailene, thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth today before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds left. Please state your name and the town you reside in and then you can begin.
Aloha, Kalei Kailekini, Hilo. Representing myself and family, absolutely against General Plan 2045. It must be rejected if Hawaii Island, property owners, especially native Hawaiians, secure protection of our lands and properties for future generations. Testifiers like myself continue to sound the alarm. The general plan is bad and shall not be implemented. Commissioners, be proactive, research our information. And you know, our safety, our rights, our properties require responsible voting. Now, UN Agenda 21 now called 2030, it exists. It is an action plan to inventory and control all land, water, plants, minerals, animals, construction, information, means of production, energy, education, human beings, slavery. The UN and global plan is being implemented how? Locally, by different names, General Plan 2045, Vision 2025, and more. In nineteen eighty-seven, the United Nations discussed privately owned lands is a threat to their Agenda 21. The rich can pay real property taxes that keeps rising, that we cannot afford taking our lands with their wealth with the help from government. Nineteen ninety-two, President George Bush, he signed into operation the UN's Real Earth Summit and activated Sustainable Development, proving that sustainable is from the United Nations. Agenda 21 is global community rights represented by sustainability of environment, equity, economic, economy designed to erode and take away private individual lands and rights given by our creator enumerated in the U.S. Constitution. Climate Change, Chapter Three, Page Fifty-Five, numerous throughout the plan and nothing about weather machines or weather technology operating from the nineteen sixties. Thereafter, an increase in hurricanes, earthquakes, tsunamis, storms. Weather statistics prove this statement. Twenty twenty-five Hawaii Wildfire Summit, soon coming up, put on by the four Hawaii.
You have thirty seconds left.
Put on by the four county fire departments to continue the wildfire false narrative. The Lahaina fires is an example. It's never been thoroughly investigated by independent organizations or groups. So to sum it up, I don't want to take up all of your time. I do appreciate all of you and your, you know, you volunteering. But our jobs right now is to educate you. So please listen to our information and we really appreciate the hard work you put in. Thank you, mahalo, and Happy New Year, by the way.
Hi, I'm Shailene Fahey, I live in Volcano. I'd like to thank my Hawaiian sister here for saying everything that I had to say. And in addition, I would like to, you know, we work hard to buy our house, to have our land. And I just want to say that probably a very few of us in this room will even be here in twenty forty-five. But whatever little bit I have, my half acre, my two tiny houses, seven hundred and thirty square feet, I want to be able to give that to my children and their children and their children and their children. We're talking about transportation. On this island, it's really hard to get around without your, having your own car. I don't want to be riding a bicycle. I don't want to be taking a bus. My dad is seventy-six years old and he lives in Fern Forest and it's about fifteen minutes from the highway, twenty minutes. He can't walk further than to get into my car. So how is he gonna get on public transportation? Are you guys gonna be sending an Uber or taxi to pick him up and take him home every time he has to go to get essentials? We already, he already is ordering food on Amazon. You know, well, my sister and I can't pick him up and take him to town. We want more freedoms, not more constrictions. And as Sister said, we know that the United Nations plan is at play here and it's, the internet has backfired. We all have use of it, this is no secret. But, and you people are just like us, we're all equal, you know? I don't think anybody's doing this with nefarious intentions, but if they are, it needs to be stopped right now in its tracks. The language using here is ambiguous. Also, notice, if you can notify us of when we have to pay our taxes.
You have thirty seconds.
By mail, you can notify every person that lives in Hawaii about these meetings and about this plan. We shouldn't have to find out about it on our own. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Excuse me, please refrain from any clapping, all right? Thank you.
Chair, your next two testifiers are Shannon Fisher and Chris Herosi. If you could please come to the testifier table, I can swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth today before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty second, thirty seconds left. And please state your name and the town you reside in and then you can begin.
My name is Shannon Fisher, I live in Volcano. I do request that I, that you do not recommend this General Plan 2045 to go through to the county council. I have given a live testimony before on other issues of this plan. I try to always find something in reading up on it, what does not resonate with me or that I feel like would not resonate with my family or my community. I noticed today that you were talking about the utilities. Of course, I do rely on Helco, I do rely on the gas company. I think that in regards to the Policy Twenty-Five Three, and I was looking up just this morning about some of the alternative ways to get the energy. And I would like to talk about the wind turbines. We do have a small amount of turbines here on the island. I believe that it's a small part of generating energy for our island. But they are dangerous. And sometimes it's a give and take, of course. But in my reading, wind turbines can have negative effects on the environment and human health. And they can also pose risks to workers. Wildlife, of course, wind turbines can injure or kill birds, and they do. In fact, we don't have the bald eagles here, but in places where there are bald eagle eagles, it is illegal to kill a bald eagle, yet hundreds, if not thousands of them, are killed regularly by wind turbines. And they can impact local populations, habitat, habitat loss. Wind farms can impact the habitats of these animals, noise pollution, infrastructure, just the service roads for wind farms can impact the environment. They also do need grease, which is oil. The materials used to make wind turbines can impact the environment. Some people who live near them have certain health reports.
You have thirty seconds left.
And you know, it would be nice if a part of our infrastructure would include being able to recycle and have recycle centers for our electronics instead of sending them off. This is something that can promote jobs here on our island and we can actually do something about really recycling a lot of these things that otherwise, you know, where does the waste go?
Your three minutes are finished, thank you for your testimony. Chris, you can go ahead and start.
I'm Chris Herosi from Mountain View. I'm against the General Plan 2045 because it is part of the UN Agenda 2030 Sustainable Development goals and that has false premise of global warming. Carbon dioxide is about four ten thousandths of the atmosphere. The man-made part is about nine millionths. CO2 is miscul. Methane makes up about two millionths of the atmosphere. Methane is microscopic. The cow belches and farts are not causing a problem. Otherwise, we wouldn't need jackets in the day, just eat more beans. I believe there is a global ruling class, also called the globalists, that controls the world through things like the UN, World Economic Forum, and the Bilderberg Group is laughing at us. Since global warming is global, it gives the globalists an excuse to override nations and the rights of their people. I think the globalists control the world by owning or partially owning the central banks around the world. An example of a privately owned central bank is the Federal Reserve, also called the Fed. They show this on their website, Section Seven, Division of Earnings pays dividends to their shareholders. Also, the Fed and income derived is exempt from taxes, except for real estate taxes. The U.S. government borrows money from the Fed when it buys its treasury bonds. The Fed creates money from nothing, the government is like their employee. In turn, the U.S. citizens are the Fed's serfs. The globalists also imprison our minds through the media. Swiss policy research shows the U.S. media, including Facebook and Google, connected to just three organizations. These are the Bilderberg Group, Council of Foreign Relations, CFR, and Trilateral Commission. I believe that the CFR and Trilateral Commission are the shadow government of the U.S. The globalists want even more wealth than they already have. The World Economic Forum came out with a twenty sixteen video saying, you'll own nothing and you'll be happy. That means we will be renting from them and they will own everything. The globalists want not only all the wealth, but total control of the population. CO2 is used to justify smart cities, which means that movement will be limited to minimize CO2. The smart city will become a technological prison. The globalists have a darker agenda, which is population control. The Gates Foundation is a strategic partner of the World Economic Forum. Bill Gates explained in his twenty-ten TED Talk, his formula is CO2 equals population times services times energy per service times CO2 per energy unit. Gates, so let's look at each one of these and see how we can get this down to zero.
You have thirty seconds left.
One of these numbers is going to have to get pretty near to zero. So either we die or use no services or zero CO2 energy. That means if we can't grow food in our rezoned area, that's a feature, not a bug. I'm a conspiracy theorist and my pronouns are, I told you so.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair, your last two testifiers in person are Michelle Melendez and Millicent Cummings. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Windward Planning Commission today?
I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes, I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Michelle Melendez, Captain Cook. The last meeting, somebody testified that urban land use was changed to conservation. And the general plan manager confirmed this mistake. That is a huge mistake in the, in the plan, huge. What other, what other mistakes are in this plan that changes urban land use to conservation? That's massive. That alone should require you to not recommend this plan go through. There have been two people in over six months of testifying, two, that have wanted this plan to go through. And each one of them has one personal thing that they would benefit from on this plan. Not one person has stood up and said, I helped create this plan, not one. And please put this whole plan through in its entirety. We have sent you guys PDFs, we have sent you exact areas in the plan that we have issues with. We have shown experts on climate that there is no climate danger. Experts, meteorologists, climatologists that say there's no climate danger. And the only source that the general plan manager says on her stance on climate change or the general plan stance is through the state. So we require you to not recommend this plan go through, we require that today. We require one of you to say, I motion for this plan not to go through. We require a second person to second that motion and we require all of you to say aye. This is what the people want, this is what we've been telling you for the past six months. So either you honor your voluntary position and your representation of the people, and you will do that today, where this whole thing for the past seven months has been a farce. We've wasted our time. Many, many people have emailed you, have contacted you. We are concerned with all the electric vehicles that they want to put in, which is going to skyrocket people's electric bill, which is going to do so much harm on this island because you cannot put these electric vehicles in a landfill. You have to remove them off island because their engine is toxic. If it gets holes in it, it will spew toxic fumes. That's not a conspiracy theory, that is a fact. You cannot put these electric vehicles in a landfill and yet you want every person on the island to have one, which is going to increase their electric bill. So again, we, the people, require you today to not recommend this plan go through, today. At the other side of the chair was asked, do you guys really have any power during a break? And he said, no, we really don't have any power. In my opinion, he's a coward, because that's a lie. Your power is your, your voice and your seat in that chair. And you are representing the people and the people have been telling you for seven months.
Thank you for your testimony.
Don't let this plan go through. We require you to do that today.
Did you raise your right hand and acknowledge the oath? Please.
Duress, because I'm not in a court of law and I'm not taking a stand to tell the truth. Of course, I will tell the truth, I'm giving you my word. Whether I have my right hand up or not, whether there's a Bible or not, this is highly inappropriate and I've said that before, I'd like that to be taken into account. And I think if I'm going to raise my right hand or my left foot, all of you and all of the commissioners should certainly have to do that. But again, we're not in a court of law, are we? Can I proceed with my three minutes? Thank you. Millicent Cummings, I'm in Hilo and I just want to stop writing testimonies, I've written many. I want to stop going to these meetings. I want to stop going to these meetings and spending the incredible amount of time that I have spent as a single parent and a profoundly concerned person who lives here. I want, as a human being to, one human being to you, each of you, human beings, who require water, require air, require land, require things for your ability to move about in this world and not perish from it. I want to share with you my morning that started at four thirty in the morning because I had to write a testimony, HB one-one-one-eight regarding mandated experimental gene therapies, vaccines, and so on and so forth, for students to have access to education, which would alter my life entirely as a single parent with no regard and with no regard to the children who would have to be experimented upon by an illegal mandate with an experimental drug fraudulently, you know, referred to as a vaccine because it assured no one any immunity. Then I submitted that. Then I had to go to work from six thirty to eight thirty. Then I had to race here and put a quarter into the machine and it didn't register. I put another one in it and just, well, if I get a ticket, I'm working my ass off for this general plan to not be recommended by you to the Planning Commission and that the Planning Commission by no means approve something that gives unelected officials power over what happens here in our community, over our resources, public trust, resources, not stakeholders from China, Russia, Africa, anywhere.
You have thirty seconds left.
Thank you very much. And then I come here a little late, Ekala Mai, to appeal to your heart to recognize us directly as the people that you are either protecting or not. And if you recommend this plan, your stance will be articulated in full breach of the public trust.
Your three minutes are finished.
Mahalo kiakua. Aloha kiakua, aloha aina.
Chair, you have one more in-person testifier, Fran Kop. Fran, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth today before the Windward Planning Commission? It is now. Please. Please state your name, the town you reside on, reside in, and you can begin. You'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining.
My name is, my name is Fran Kop, and I live in Hilo. And I just want to state that I feel like this is a part of a global initiative to control and suppress the ability of people to feed and have access to water and energy to live. Hello? Okay. There's really no way to fund this plan, and it's really, it's really being railroaded. And when I hear it and I listen to people, I have this fear of, in order for this plan to be implemented, half the people are going to be executed in some way. I mean, that we're going to have some type of climate change, like happened in Lahaina and other places in the United States, and that people, that the real goal is to eliminate, you know, a lot of the population, and that's, you know, the in the UN, and their doctrine and stuff, they want to have five hundred million people or something like that. So it's a very ambitious, vague plan that is something that they could implement when a lot of people maybe aren't here. And it's just, it's a really scary idea. And it's overly ambitious, very vague, and it's overlaid on an island the same way that it's overlaid in an urban or rural community in the United States. And I don't think this plan should be implemented at all. And I agree with Michelle that that people should vote not to do this and to do it today. You know, what would happen if we did it today and ended this general plan from going any further and really looking at what we can do as a community versus having something imposed upon us? Thank you for your time. I know you're volunteers, and I appreciate everyone being here today.
Chair, that concludes the in-person testimony.
Okay, thank you for all your testimony. Now we will go into Zoom testimony. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, we have seven, eight testifiers
Okay.
on Zoom. So we're going to start with Diane Christensen. Can you please turn, unmute yourself and turn on your video so we can see you? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes, I do.
Okay, you'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know in thirty seconds for me. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Diane Christensen. I reside in on the Kona side. I'd like to start with this plan is taking away the American dream of being a homeowner, landowner, and that of a native Hawaiian's land that has been passed for generations and passed down for many years, many should be passed down for many more generations to come. Could this general plan of twenty twenty or twenty forty-five be considered unconstitutional? Even if the plan was passed disguising that the rezoning of the property, changing title of homeowners, landowners, is an accident? Or is that illegal to take someone's property away from them? Changing the title from the property from urban to conservative, conservatization or natural land, also changing it to an HOA but actually making it a leasehold contract, but the owners did not go into the contract on the purchase of the day, the day of purchase. A leasehold, the property can be changed when it releases up. But here, the owners did not purchase a leasehold of the property with an HOA. Homeowners and landowners who rely on the equity put into their homes to get a loan that will not be able to. For the retirees that want to get a loan to carry out their days will not be able to. For the ones who need to sell, oops, excuse me, I'm nervous, need to sell for the money to make to do so, they will not be able to. To the family members who will, who were to inherit, property will no longer have their inheritance. Displacing people, the deed title is useless to them at the stroke of a pen by someone who has decided to change the property to the zoning of their paid-for property. And they will no longer have, get the value of what they put into the home and land, et cetera. We have a housing crisis on our island. This could deter developers to purchase land to build to help with the crisis. They could think, why would I, why would, why, when the land could be rezoned after purchase during the time of development, after the completion of the development? All the money worth is money not worth risking is in such a high-risk island. Or the homes cannot be sold because of the disclosure that is of the county has the right to rezone your home. New disclosure for real estate on the big island. Passing the plan in the county will make it easy for other counties to adopt the plan. This plan has been thought out, has been thought out, but not is, but isn't transparent as it should be because it hurts the people who live here. Not having precise detail leaves this plan to go sideways for all involved.
Thirty seconds.
There are no real described in terms of to be disclosed. Your land, that is, their, your right to take the land, that part is clear. We have an island, now I'm all confused, okay. Anyway, basically, this land, this should not be passed. This is going to be costly. We have other costly plans that end up costing us the conservatives' land, the lava flow migrations, they've all cost us because they were really not well thought out of, so.
Three minutes is up. Thank you for your testimony. Chair, we have April Lee. Please unmute and turn on your camera. April Lee.
And camera. Okay, can you see me?
There we go. Okay.
Great.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I swear do, I do.
You have three minutes. Oh, you have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds is up. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you, volunteer planning commissioners. I know this is a tough job, and you're hearing a lot of people that are very adamant. And I think one of the reasons is that we're afraid. And we're afraid because some of the things are very kind of ambiguous. So safe and effective is a tough thing to meet out unless it's very specific because there have been a recent lawsuit against the LA plan, the smart city plan, and they are actually winning and saying that it violates Fourth Amendment rights to be secure from seizures of property, which I worry about because the county has now said, you got to produce like money and pay GE tax on profits, or you're going to have your ag zoning mill rate go up to residential. That really hurts someone that's on social security. I mean, really. And also, there are surveilling with these broadband initiatives, and they absolutely stated that this highly digital supposedly connected community was very dangerous for many of us who are highly sensitive to the high frequencies. And there are many, many, and I could send four pages of links, but I understand you can't open a link. I'm just feeling that, you know, we, I'm a, I'm also a broker, and I've been for forty-eight years. And I've been so busy doing charitable work, it's very hard to get into, you know, making money in real estate because, you know, my, my kids even, my daughter, my only child, and my only family that has my immediate, you know, they can't find affordable place to live. And, and every time they suggest things, they're completely unrealistic. I worked in this affordable housing area now for five and a half years, and it's almost like we just waste our time because land is so expensive. We need to make sure that this plan does something realistic there. And the other part of that is, we need to encourage by maybe funding education, higher education, and encouraging too many people were raised in a family that didn't have an ideal of higher education. And then the other thing is because of that, they don't know how to complain. So our parks have gotten into terrible shape, and I'm an emergency responder. There's albezia trees covering the drive into our emergency. I just want to make sure the county focuses on things that are really going to benefit our health and effective safety in a disaster, in things like housing and things like being able to fund things that are for the elderly people because there's buildings vacant that are supposed to be for the elderly, and we've never opened it once for elderly use. Let's arrange this so we have a ledger to show all the money coming in from the county and all the money going out. So the county is transparent of all the things on this.
Three minutes are finished. Thank you for your testimony. Chair, our next testifier is Elizabeth Cook. Please unmute and turn your camera on. Elizabeth, okay. Elizabeth, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do affirm.
You'll have three minutes, and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain.
Right. I just, I want to testify, the first, my first impression of the plan without even, I, I mean, I didn't give it, it's a big thing to read, and, but was that it is completely not organic. So, I mean, it seems like, I could read some of my previous testimony, but my, my second objection was that the word, to the word stakeholders and cluster, it's, it's, I understand villages, we, I mean, Hawaii had fishing villages and, and and industrial villages where people get together to make, and farming villages, agricultural villages. I just know, I do object to the cluster word, and it makes me think of the projects on the East Coast. And I don't, I don't, I don't want to see that happen in Hawaii. My, my next objection is to the, as far as the transportation things goes, I think that we have to look at that electric vehicle thing, idea as not, I mean, we cannot mandate that. The recent fire in Moss Landing at the lithium storage battery just brought that up to the front of my mind, that that is, it's very frightening. A lithium fire is very highly polluting. It has polluted the whole Salinas Valley, and people who can afford to are, you know, going elsewhere to stay until things settle down. But it's going to be settling on the fruits and vegetables that feed the world and feed, feed the United States and, and the world. And so I, those are like my recent, you know, that was, that, that, it's like, we have to watch, we have to watch and be careful. And our, our wind turbines affecting our wildlife, our birds, and so I'm just, I'm just, I just want to say that it is appropriate and, and possible to reject this iteration of this plan and to start over. It's never too late to start over. And so I respectfully and prayerfully submit my testimony to the committee and to the people. Thank you for your service. And I just have to say that it's okay to start over, except the Lord built the house, the builders' labor in vain. And I reject this plan and request that it be tossed and a new Pono Plan B created by the people. I'd like to see more Hawaiian culture showing up.
Thirty seconds.
All right, that's, thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Chair, next we have Julie Schaus. Julie Schaus, will you turn on your camera and microphone? Julie, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
I do, and I will.
Okay, you have three minutes, and I'll let you know in thirty seconds for me. You may begin.
Okay, aloha, council members. My name is Julie Schaus, and I'm a president of Captain Cook. My land provides food for the big island here. This plan is disingenuous. It has a disingenuous agenda. It should not even have gotten this far. It's a covert, top-down form of oppression and suppression of the Hawaii people. I'm shocked that government could even find volunteers such as yourselves to do this kind of dirty work to us. The Hawaiian people won't stand for this, and as the word gets out, you'll be surprised at the increasing revolt. No one wants Hawaii land turned into conservation land for the elites' private playground, nor the Hawaiian people shoved into commune-type smart cities. How grotesque. I wrote a letter to all of you opposing Wesley Segawa. He's a convicted felon. But it looks low as you, you've approved to have him run your agenda anyway. I speak for myself and my family. We oppose the general plan twenty forty-five. No one should have the right to take away or rezone a family's property for phony environmental reasons. Council members, please take action to stop this heinous plan, and mahalo for your attention. Council members, please take action to stop this heinous plan and mahalo for your attention.
Thank you for your testimony.
Excuse me, Chair. May I just make a point of something the last testifier said? She referred to this body as the council. This is the Windward Planning Commission. It's not the county council.
Okay, Chair, the next testifier is Lama Koo Mika Hala Roy. Please turn on your camera and your microphone. Lama Koo.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can. Can I just?
Your name?
It's Alex. We spoke on the phone.
Oh, okay. I'm surprised. You're, please be gracious as you are to welcome the people, to give their time. Don't be so quick to be cutting us and speaking so strongly of the three minutes. Because it's hard enough to accept that that is the burden before us. So make it as, as easy as you can, Alex.
Okay, can I swear? Can I swear you in?
You know, I agree with earlier testimony where, you know, if you folks have all sworn to tell the truth at all times, then we're in good company. And if I can get that acknowledgement from the members of this commission, I don't mind at all because I do tell the truth.
Okay, you may begin.
I am Lama Koo Mika Hala Roy, Akahu and Kahuna Nui of Ahuinaheiau, Ekamakuhonu Kona Hawaii. My life unfolds as a series of miracles by God for the people of God and all of God's creation. Like Saint Joan de Arc, Joan of Arc, the maid, the great heroine of France, I hear the voices of Hawaii's ancestors, Na Oiwi, the people of the bones of the Pacific. These voices come from the highest lineages of Oiwi stationed at the right hand of God, the Father Almighty, who serve most high God. These voices for Akua have guided me since twenty-ten, and I have made reports to all government offices in Hawaii, including and especially Hawaii County. Mauna Waka is located in Hawaii County. Mauna Waka is the heart of the earth. As such, Akua guides me to express great information to the world. Akua guides me that the first kingdom of God upon the planet was Kamakuhonu. Akua guides me to express the first kingdom of Akua, Kamakuhonu is restored by most high God by Akua's chosen ruler, King Ali'i Nui Mo'i Edmund Ke'aki Silva the Second. This, the identity of this ruler arrived from heaven by the heavenly messenger Ka'i O, the heavenly hawk, who gave his life for this revelation to us on May tenth, twenty fifteen, Sunday, Mother's Day. No man nor any creation anywhere has the power over almighty Akua Manamanaloa. Akua reigns in authority and dominion upon the earth and everywhere. All residents of Hawaii County opposed to the revised plan of twenty forty-five are in good company. We're surrounded and guided by helpers, angels, guides, and more of Akua Manamanaloa. See this document for what it is, a foreign rushed document of words reflecting greed with intent to change the pristine first lands created by Akua and first lovingly cared for by Oiwi. Oiwi honored Akua and honored the lands. We still honor Akua and the land. We, we have the opportunity to plan most wisely for the care of the lands as Akua. God wishes them to be cared for. We Maulya Hoonua descendants and established families of the land know by our family lineages, our Hawaii as it was in the beginning. And we are to honor ourselves for our great perseverance that we may continue to love and care for our Hawaii in Ke'au Lama era of light, a world of healing without end created by Akua. Behold the precious words we all grew up by, aloha ke'ahi ke'ahi, admonishing us to love one another. Declared by most high God, I am her majesty Ka'i O Manaulo Kalani Ki Eki Eloa Ke'ahi Enana Mo'kalou Lani. Supreme one of the sacred power of the highest heaven, the eternal fires of the numerous heavens. I now call to hear from the Maulya Hoonua of the families of the lands of the sixth district of our Hawaii island. Commissioners, you hold these meetings when people can't, the lands, the people of the lands work cannot attend. Your actions to rush these proceedings are seen. Your actions to deliberately not hear the kupu, citizens native of this land are known in the light of day and in the light of righteousness of Akua. Manamanaloa, most high God, commissioners, you are not to recommend this draft general plan.
Thirty seconds.
I'm available for questions. This is a statement of most high God that the ruler for the future in Hawaii, as it was in the beginning, is Akua's chosen ruler, King Ali'i Nui Mo'i Edmund Ke'aki Silva the Second. This is done. It is restored. And I have sent you the documentation to prove this. Over the years, I have sent the same to the government. It is all known and now known again.
The three minutes are finished. Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay, Chair, we have a Eugene Elmer. Eugene, please turn on your microphone and camera so I can swear you in. Eugene, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this now matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Yes, I do. Do you guys swear to tell the truth?
You'll have three minutes and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remains. You may begin.
Okay, I moved here in nineteen seventy-seven. And one of the foundation of this foundations of this general plan is climate change. Our climate hasn't changed and the sea level is not rising. Let's get those facts out of the way right now. This plan calls for clustering people together, which is the exact opposite of what needs to happen. What we need is lots of small organic farms to provide nutrient-dense food for those who live here and for export. Bound, ban roundup like the county council voted to do a few years back just to have Harry Kim veto that resolution. Ban five G until the studies are done independently as the county council voted to do eight to one back in twenty twenty. Do you guys remember that resolution? Well, you're, you're not the county council, you're a commission of volunteers. But I'm sure some of you do know about that. Let's make Hawaii healthy again, shall we? That sounds like a lot, a better idea than what, what this plan is. This general plan is a UN agenda, and you all must know this. To continue with this agenda is traitorous. To we the people and those involved will be held accountable, whether you're volunteer or not. We are farmers here and need our diesel trucks, gas weed eaters and chainsaws, and all the other equipment that runs off of fossil fuel. Making all vehicles and equipment all-electric will not be workable and is catering to special interests such as Helco, which has BlackRock as its largest shareholder. Which makes me wonder, you know, you guys are volunteers. But a lot of the people wonder whether or not there's somebody in your ear. We all wonder that. And, and we're paying attention, this community is paying attention to that very much. Because, you know, this, this process is not going through the, the way it should be. You know, this should have been on a ballot, should have been, this should have been on, on a ballot, either in this last election or in an election, you know, upcoming an election. You're not giving people, you know, you're not notifying people. Most people don't know about it. I know thousands of people on this island, and I'm telling lots of people that two people are busy. Do not recommend this plan to the county council. We the people have spoken. We do not want this. The Kanaka don't want this, and no one else does either. Put this on the ballot in two years and you will hear even more opposition to this general plan. We the people say no to this plan. Do not recommend it.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, Chair, we have two more. Dave Webb. Please turn on your microphone and camera so I can swear you in. Dave Webb. Okay, well, we'll come back to Dave. Josephine Calapio. Josephine, are you available? Please turn your microphone and camera on.
Let's see, I think as we're trying to get these folks on Zoom, let's take a ten-minute recess.
Hi, this is Lama Kumika Hala Roy calling again. I'm just calling again about my flow of the meeting going on. It stopped and I want to make sure I know why it's not. I have my volume up, but it's not coming through to me.
Um, Lama Koo, they're in a recess right now.
Oh, okay.
They're about to adjourn. Yep, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back from our recess and we will continue with this part of the agenda. Can we have the next Zoom testifier, please?
I got no response, but we'll try again. Dave Webb, are you available? Dave Webb, please turn your camera on and your microphone. Okay, I don't see Dave, but I do see Josephine. So let's go ahead with with Josephine. I'm going to swear you in. So please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this now matter now before the Windward Planning Commission?
Of course.
Okay, you'll have three minutes and I'll let you know when 30 seconds remain, you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Dear Commissioners, I agree with all the testifiers that came before me. That general plan needs somehow need you. You do need to let the county council know that uh all the many of the testifiers, most of us, um, in fact, maybe all of us testified against it. And and I hope that you do need uh let the council members know this when it comes before the council. Although the planning department has worked really hard on this plan over the last 15 years, the plan still fails to adequately address the hidden smart growth agenda. The climate change excuse was used when Lahaina was incinerated and was again used when numerous other towns around the world, including LA, was incinerated. So we have a pretty good idea of where this 2045 plan is going. And 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 to tell you the truth, it's it's not good. Okay, so um, it's the same playbook. Track, trace, and surveillance, just like Communist China. Okay, so in closing, I just want to want to uh make sure that in order to assure that this this track, trace, surveillance agenda, uh 5G and all of this stuff, um, that to assure that it never happens here, um, you need to put that down. You need to add that. You need to add that into this this plan right away. It's not there. Okay, it's not there. It's not spoken about. I haven't heard April say anything about it. It needs to be done right away. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Uh, I got a message from Dave. He has no microphone. So I'm not sure what we can do for him on Zoom. Other than that, that's the last testifier.
All right, very good. I want to thank everyone who has taken the time to come up here and testify. You know, we always always. Okay, it looks like we have another testifier in person.
Kevin, you can just go ahead and have a seat. Right here at the at the table. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know in 30 seconds remain. Please state your name and the town you reside in and you may begin.
My name is Kevin Hill. Good morning, all. I live in Haukala. Thanks for uh being here. Appreciate all of you who are volunteering to represent the people. My uh my comments are kind of simple, probably won't take three minutes. I just uh I've just been watching these for six months or so. And uh watching people feel frustrated, feel like one of the people even in this, not here, I think today, but mentioned that he felt berated as people were coming in and giving their testimony on this council. And uh I understand that feeling and I also understand how frustrated it feels to be one of the people who feel like we testify and that nobody hears. And I wonder if you guys feel the same way. I think we feel that the same way in Hawaii a lot, that people testify. I I was looking through the website, seeing all the written testimonies and some awesome stuff. I've listened to probably 300 testimonies here, given a few of my own. And um like 99.9% of them are like, hey, can we just wait on this whole thing? We put a pause on this. What's the big hurry to push this through? I know we're late, but hey, what's another six months or whatever to actually really make this something that represents this community who are testifying? And we all end up feeling powerless. And I wonder if you guys feel powerless. Like, but my my encouragement is is that this is what we can do. We can speak up, speak truth as candidly and as clearly as we can. I've heard some really intelligent testimonies of people who've really read page by page of the plan. And there's a lot of things I like about the plan, but there's some things I really don't like about the plan and really don't want it to move forward without those things being adjusted. And that's what I'm asking for. And I don't think it's a big ask. So I'm curious, like I've heard. I've heard conversation that like we're we only have so much power needs to go to the county council. And I'm like, but if all of you say no, right, you have a lot of power. And I just want to encourage you to just listen. If you went back and listened, I don't know, there's probably several thousand testimonies just to like analyze what percentage of those are saying, yeah, we love this. Let's just go forward. Regardless of whether people dismiss parts of it as conspiracy theory or not, it's like it's not conspiracy theory. If you research it and you find out that no, there is there is outside forces that actually do have, you know, things that they'd like to see implemented in our community. And we want to make sure that what we're want to represent in our community is represented in our community. And so that's my urge to you as you have the power that you have, listen to your conscience, any plan that's mixed with, you know, like the the uh climate change agenda, right? That's just such a dynamic agenda. There's so much going into that, but it's 130 plus times throughout the plan. It is like a systemic truth embraced by it. And I'm saying it's not a truth. It's it's not a truth that should be accepted for what it is without analysis, like objective.
You have 30 seconds left.
Critical minded people. So I I'm here. I uh I pastor a small church in town. I care about our community a lot. I care about the people who are testifying here. I exhort and encourage you all. We're asked what I'm asking for is to delay the acceptance of the plan and sending it on to the county council and to actually have real meaningful community input. Thank you very much. Appreciate you guys. Got a lesson along.
Chair, that's all the testimony we have.
Okay, again, thank you for everyone who has testified. Okay. Now that we have uh that part of the um agenda done, I will open up the floor to any questions the commissioners have for the staff or the director. Okay, I have a I have a question. I don't know if this should go to um Director Darrell or uh the folks that made the presentation, but I think we need some clarification on what exactly this document is. Okay, um because it's not law at this point in time. Okay, so yes, we do have the ability at this juncture in time, right, to to adjust things. And so I think we just need clarification on, you know, um from what I understand, this is this is a plan. Okay, this is a uh, you know, a pathway. But it's not law and to to become law, it has to be put into ordinances. Is that correct? So I think we just need some clarification on what exactly um really what what this is, because I think a lot of people think this is um this is going to be the law, what's in this document. And I think we need some clarification on that.
Aloha, April Supernaut with the Planning Department. So um I think the best way to address that question is to reference the purpose and authority, which is on page 2028 of the plan. It outlines it very clearly of what the the purpose and authority is. And in particular, our county charter. And I'm gonna read the quote from the county charter. I won't read all of it because it's kind of long. But the county council, this is what the charter says, which is section 3-15 uh states that the county council shall adopt by ordinance a general plan which shall set forth the council's long range policy for the comprehensive physical, economic, environmental, and sociocultural well being of the county. It goes further to outline in more detail what that means and what that looks like. And so it does get adopted by ordinance. I would say there's some aspect of it, but it it's a very high high level plan. Uh, there's some aspect of it that does have the force and effect of law because it's adopted by ordinance. And I would defer to your corporation council to to further elaborate on that piece. But um in order to implement any any of the policies that are in here, it takes additional action. It means changing code. So even if this were to be adopted, it would mean that additional actions have to happen. Some of them are might need to happen at the state, which we as the county have no control over. Um, others of them are some are maybe practices that that a department or an agency with the county would have to just do something a little differently in order to implement the policy or action that are in the plan. But this plan was specifically a little different from the current 2005 general plan. Um, we were much more detailed and specific about actions. So to be more transparent about what that might look like. Further, we've added in the implementation section we've not, which we have not presented to you yet, but will be forthcoming at subsequent meeting um in the implementation section is a table of all of those actions. And it states which agencies might be involved in in implementing those in some form. Again, many of the policies and actions in here are not worded in a way that are mandates for all people in Hawaii County, meaning residents and visitors or even you all. So there are a lot of things that are noted in here are options or opportunities um for uh people to be able to use if they so choose to. Again, I know we talked about um vehicles and things like that. If you live remotely and you have to have a vehicle, of course you have a vehicle. This doesn't say you shouldn't have a vehicle and it doesn't say that you're required to have an EV vehicle. It does talk about the county wanting to have more renewable energy resources. It does talk about the county having a a bigger commitment in having renewable uh energy vehicles. That that is something, but that's more about being resilient in how we use our resources on this island, being more resilient about how much we actually ship here and have to rely on shipments that come here rather than the economies. We call it a circular economy. Again, we haven't covered economy yet with you, but we will at a subsequent meeting um where we talk about wanting to depend on each other and the economies and the um uh commercial actions, uh retail and such that we want to support each other on on island and rely less on bringing things in. So it's really, it's really based in that. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think that um, you know, because I I just think that there's been some uh fogginess about that issue. Does anyone else have questions?
Question.
Yes.
Could we go to the land use maps?
Sure.
The old versus the proposed.
Sure.
Thank you.
Give me one moment while I pull it up and then I'll share screen.
Awesome. Thank you.
Of course. Of course. Okay, we are in the map now and I have pulled up the, um. You can see here the left, I just point this out for anyone who wants to utilize this map on their own. And I try to point it out every time I share it is the left, the, the leading layer is on the left side. Um, and in this case, the leading layer is the proposed general plan. And the right side is the trailing layer. And the trailing layer right now is on the two thousand five general plan. So this will compare, as you've requested, the current general plan is on the right. And the proposed general plan is on the left.
Okay. How much land was converted from urban to, uh, what is it? Conservative?
Conservation.
Sorry.
So we have a slide that we showed in the, I don't know if that's accessible. Well, I guess I could go to it online if I have, if I need to find it. But we showed some charts um, in our presentation when we went through the general plan and they were bar charts. And it showed how much land had been converted. Um, so in. I don't have an exact number. Go to the urban if you don't mind. So that was, go back up again, right there. Yeah, right here, a hundred thousand. So a hundred thousand acres went from two thousand five to uh, proposed conservation in twenty twenty four, which is the twenty forty five plan. About a hundred thousand acres were added to conservation. From two thousand five to proposed. However. Ninety nine percent of that land is in state land use conservation. So one of the things that the current general plan does not do is it does not indicate state land use that is currently conservation, which means it is conservation no matter what. State land, as you all know, you, you review these applications that come before you, for you and when people want to change their state land use. If it's state land use conservation, the state prevails. And so if it is state land use conservation, it is conservation land, no matter what the general plan calls it. And so we felt it would be prudent to be consistent with that. And so along the coastline, for example, much of the coastline around the island is state land use conservation. And so we've noted it as that because it's already conservation. So instead of open or recreation, as it would have been called in twenty two thousand five. We've noted it as conservation because it's state land use conservation. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay.
Okay, now you said ninety nine percent was the land that was converted to conservation. What was the one percent? Were, were any of those private landowners? And if so, were they notified of this change?
Yes, all landowners that were, that were shifted from um, from an urban use or anything like that to open recreation, um. Conservation, those were, we were required pursuant to the general plan to notify them in writing and we've done that.
So upon notifying, notifying them in writing, do they have the opportunity to have it changed back? Being that they own the land and they've probably invested into the land. Um, you know, for the value of it.
We'd have to run a query. So to answer your, part of your first question, we'd have to run a query. Which would take a little bit. I can't do it on the spot today um, to see how much urban land was converted to conservation. That means state land use urban to general plan conservation, I think is what you mean.
Yes.
Okay. But then what was your second question that you just asked me? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
They're getting compensated because you're going from state urban to state conservation. And there is a change in the value of the land going from one to the other.
Right.
So along with notifying them, are they being compensated or given the opportunity to change it back? To what it originally was, because you know, when they purchase the land, they, I'm pretty sure they purchased it one for the value. And in lieu of it, they've invested. So are they being compensated?
Yeah. Um, again, I need to run a query to answer part of that question. But the county cannot take, it's legally, we are not allowed to take land that um, without compensation, that, that, that just needs to be said right up front. So the county is not taking any land and the county would absolutely have to, if we were taking land, we would have to compensate for it.
Sure.
Typically, private land, one, one quick second, private land that has a conservation easement on it already. We have notations of those things. And so those lands are, might have been changed to conservation on the map. For that reason, because they already have conservation easements on the land that entitle it and live in perpetuity with the land. The other piece is that their zoning, their zoning does not change. Their zoning does not change. The general plan is broad, high level look at the future, right? But if someone already has urban, if they have CV, for example, uh, which is a commercial zoning under the zoning code, which is chapter twenty five of the Hawaii County Code. They are still allowed to do what their zoning entitles them to do. It does not change their zoning or the uses with their zoning. If it's residential, they can still build their house and use their property in accordance with the zoning code. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense.
Okay, great.
Clarifying.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Director Daryl, you have something to say?
Thank you. Um, just, I mean, April definitely uh, was answering uh, the question that was being asked. I think the misunderstanding is that there is a very clear difference between s- state land use conservation, state land use urban zoning and the general plan conservation. And the urban type of general plan designations. All this plan is doing is changing the higher level general plan designation to match mo- ninety nine plus percent in the conservation zone lands. It's not changing urban lands. When, when, when we look at, as April said, a letter goes out, but majority of that is state land that's already conservation. When it does change, a lot of times it's punk land that was, that was um, acquired by the county for conservation purposes or open purposes. Or it's, it's nonprofits that own land that want to preserve the land. And they would like that conservation over their designation. But, but again, the misunderstanding that we're hearing constantly in this process is you've changed my zoning. And that is, that is so far from the truth. And that's what people need to be aware of. This does not affect your zoning until another action down the road happens. Whether they want to rezone or whether some action happens like an SMA permit or something. That's where the general plan will come into play. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, more questions? Come on, more questions? I think. I think this is a question, but if you could add that in, that would probably help people with the state uh, land designations. I mean, I, I know sometimes it's hard, even, you know, with what we do. Because there's different land, land designations for the same piece of land. Whether it's um, you know, county, state, um, loop egg, so things kind of can overlap. Okay, I, you know, another thing that came up, um. Can we talk about transfer of development rights, TDR?
Sure.
Yeah, so uh, I heard a couple of testifiers, um, and there's quite a few of the written testimonies that uh, were asking about that. Um, so I would like some clarification on that, please.
Absolutely. So transfer of development rights is a tool that is used if there are areas that are flood, flood zones are a perfect example. And that was an example frankly, from um, our bayfront area that um, something similar was, was utilized. But it's, it's a tool that can be used that is authorized through state legislation. But the county does not have any um, legislation or codes that set it up yet. We don't have it actually available for the county, but it is authorized by the state if the county chose to go that route. But what it does is it sets up areas um, that may be of particularly high hazard and have repeated uh, disasters happening that are highly affected. Um, it can give those residents an opportunity to shift their development rights if they choose from that area to what's referred to as a, that's called a sending area where it's the, the, the development rights are sent from here to an area called receiving areas. And uh, that's where typically where there would be um, more resources or whatever the, the county sets up at that time if it were to be done. Then allows people to transfer their right, let's say, build a house to a different location and then be able to build two houses, for example. Or they're allowed to build, if it's commercial, a certain number of square feet. They can transfer that right of that, let's call it a thousand square feet of commercial. They can transfer that to a different commercial um, location and be able to, let's say, it also allows for a thousand square feet. But you have this extra a thousand square feet that you can now do over here for two thousand square feet. So you can increase the density and transfer the developmental rights from one place to another place so that you don't lose that opportunity, but you can do it in a place that might be more appropriate for that type of development. That's a very simplified sort of example of how transfer development rights work.
And that's uh, completely voluntary, up to the landowner?
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? No. Um, I have another question. So reading the part on transportation, um, yeah, I mean, electric, electric, electric. I don't see anything about like biofuel. Um, you know, I mean, it, did I, is there anything in there with biofuel? Because it seems to me that that would be a good uh, use of our waste oil on this island, I mean, cooking oil.
We do talk about, yeah, great question. We do talk about biofuels in the energy section of the plan. Um, so it is in there. Um, we do talk about it in the climate section as a, as an opportunity. Um, and it is in the economy section. So it's sort of scattered because it covers a lot of different, a lot of different things, but uh, what was that one you just had? So supporting research and development of vi- viable biofuel products and um, projects, things like that. So we do address biofuels as an option or an opportunity.
Okay, so. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, if there's no more questions. No more questions, uh, we'll go to the discussion and deliberation section. So now we'll begin the discussion deliberation portion of the meeting. We have a motion on the floor to forward the general plan to council with a favorable recommendation. This is the time for the commissioners to provide their input and express opinions. I'll be calling on each of you to explain your position with respect to this section of the general plan review today or with respect to prior sections reviewed previously. So it's open to discussion. I think, I guess I'll start. Personally, I think there's probably some things we should redact uh, from, from this document. And I think th- there's, there's, there's a couple, and I think climate change is one of them. I think that this document, I mean, that's all I see uh, when I'm reading this. And you know, that's a tough question, right? We don't know. We don't, we don't know what our planet does. We haven't been around that long, you know, we, we, we just don't know the phases that, that we go through. So it just seems that you know, that's like um, you hear that on kind of all levels of government. Um, this whole climate change thing and it's, it's in there a lot. And you know, for me, uh, living in Kaua, in Ocean View, you're talking about pollution. Well, right down there today, that volcano is pumping out um. Hundreds of tons of, I mean, my nose has been clogged for weeks because of it. I mean, we actually had Bailey's hair down there. So um, you talk about a polluter. So I, I, I had a hard time, um, you know, our, our island is not like a basin like LA or Mexico City. They have horrible problems with, with pollution because it just sits there. Now we get the trades, it blows off the island. So that part of it, I kind of got a, you know, a problem with because I mean, what's our island? Two hundred fifty thousand people roughly? Yeah, two, two, okay, two hundred thousand people. You know, I, there's no way we're producing, you know, a hundred tons of CO2 per day. Um, so I think that we should you know, kind of redact that from, from this document. I mean, I just don't see how our activities here are impacting the climate of, of our state. And I think that this plan. I mean, I think a lot of it uh, needs to be a little bit more tailored to our state and, and to our people. Uh, you know, from what I'm hearing in, in, in the testimonies, um. You know, it's uh, you know, it's something that we have to, you know, take a really hard look at. Uh, when we have uh, mother nature as our biggest polluter out here.
Okay, thank you. And, and that, that is certainly your prerogative as, as a, as a commission. Um, but I will, it is worth saying that in terms of being tailored to our state, the information that is provided in here about climate change um, comes from both our uh, Hawaii County Climate Action Plan, which has been reviewed. It was publicly made available. It was adopted by the county council and such. Um, as well as various state plans that reference the overall state, but also individual counties. So the reference material is provided in online with all of our references in terms of where this information was sourced. I hear what you're saying and, and I understand, but did want to point out that, that this comes from information that was provided from our county and our state. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, remember that, um. So I suppose we would need a motion if we wanted to redact any of that. Um, so I think uh, this is, you know, we're still in discussion phase. Um, you know, along that lines. Um, you know, we can go to like electric vehicles and infrastructure and things like that. Now, you know, the biofuel thing is in there, but not very much. Um, it seems to be a lot, you know, heavy on this whole electric thing. Um, the thing that's, the, the thing that- Um, the thing that's, the the thing that struck me was that in the state, we have like thirty two thousand hmm, one hundred something electric vehicles registered, yet statewide, we only have three hundred like twenty-two charging stations. Um, don't you think that the the infrastructure uh, to facilitate that would would completely outweigh the um, the the benefits, um, since we already have an infrastructure based on petroleum? Um, you see, that, that's why I I'm really big on the, on like the biofuels, because it's we can use existing um, infrastructure, and I think, you know, s- some of this in here, um, we got to look at that, that, I mean, what we already have in place. Yeah, I mean, and how are we going to fund this, right? That's, that's the other thing that, um, you know, as reading this, you know, where's all the money going to come from? Uh, you know, for for these, for these things, if it comes to fruition.
Understood. Thank you, thank you Chair. Uh, so a few things is, I think electric vehicles, we just did a quick word search, are mentioned eight times in this overall plan. Um, we'd have to look at the term biofuel to see how many times, pardon? Oh, ironically, it's also about eight, um, so about the same, um. I, it's also just worth noting because there were some um, questions about EVs, and so we did some research with our uh, uh, motor vehicle department. Um, and we, in the last ten years, have had sixty-six hundred, so six thousand six hundred EVs on our island. Um, just so you know, um, and we also talked with our fire department about these, um, since I know that it's a slide that we had hidden in this presentation, but we can make that available to you. Um, there've been two fires in the last ten years, um, specifically related to electric vehicles. Um, so I do think that's relevant. Um, I don't have the number, but we're taking note to try to get the number of um, of EV uh, uh, fueling stations um, on our island, and I'll have that number readily available, but we'll find out how many we have. Um, I think your point is valid, and again, this plan is not, um, it is not saying that you, you know, the people who live or visit here cannot have or should not ha- you know, have um, regular vehicles. I think biofuels is a great example for diesel equipment and things like that that can be used biodiesel um, that can be used for those. So it does speak to, again, more renewable energy resources and trying to use more renewable energy in various ways. These are just two examples that we're referring to right now in terms of biofuels or electric. Um, but looking to be more efficient, again, with shipping and all other, other things that 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 uh, are affected by this particular conversation. I think the idea is to try to be, um, and look for new, new technologies and innovations going forward um, to try to utilize more renewable energy sources in general. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, okay, so public transportation. You know, right now, we have the Halley on bus, right? That's, that's it. When I was living on Maui, uh, in the nineties, I wish we had public transportation over there, because I was uh, young and didn't have a lot of money and would have been nice to gotten around easily. I, I think that's a good program, um, I do, what? Are there any plans on expanding that system? Um, either in more, I mean, I know it comes through Ocean View a couple of times a day, um, but I mean, are there, are there more plans to have uh, more times, uh, more buses, um? Uh, you know, things like that, because I think, you know, this island is very unique. Um, our population centers are far apart. Um, you know, I think, you know, obviously, public transportation works really well in large urban centers. Um, but I then, I I don't know any alternative here except, except a bus. Um, you know, which is fine, uh, but I know in the past, it's been unreliable. Um, you know, they charged a fee, they didn't charge a fee. Um, you know, where does the monies come from right now to run, run the Halley on bus, uh, since they don't charge?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, the prime, I, I, so I, I don't work for MTA, so I'm going to speak to what I understand and my knowledge in having um, worked with them on on various things and certainly in this plan. Um, a lot of the funding for the MTA system or mass transit system, buses comes from federal funds. There are very specific federal funds for transit. And so a lot of their funds from, come from uh, federal funds. And then they're also supplemented by the G E T tax, the general excise tax that the county collects. So they use um, some of that G E T, but most of their funding comes from federal sources for transportation, um, that are specifically and only to be used for transit services. Um, it is my understanding that they have, have been and will continue to expand their fleet. As you can well imagine, buses are extremely expensive. Um, because they're so expensive, sometimes we purchase buses from other counties when they are um, when they're not going to use, they get new buses and they're not going to use their bus anymore, and sometimes we purchase them, but that means it's an older model it's used. Um, and so they sometimes have breakdown issues and things like that. I know that MTA also um, utilizes some of their funds, as as many of us know, seeing Roberts buses. Um, they're contracted with Roberts is my understanding. Um, and all of those buses have the Halley on uh, sticker on the side of their buses to show that um, that they're Halley on buses for that purpose. So they are utilizing our uh, existing, um, um, uh, again, that sort of circular economy, in a way, they're utilizing some of our local vendors um, to help supplement, to provide more access um, and more, and more routes and and more buses. What their numbers are, I'm sorry, I don't have that on the top of my head, um, in terms of what they're trying to increase. But I know that is their goal and part of their master plan that speaks directly to their, um, their service.
Thank you, Commissioner Parent, yes.
Sorry. I have a question in regards, um, still on the topic of mass transit. What is the, or could you explain what the county street design is? Because it looks like these, these two one leans on the other in order to progress, so you know, the street design needs to be developed and the mass transit needs to come behind and follow, but I think what happened here is, a lot of communities far in stretch, the decided, decided to develop knowing that transportation was kind of limited and now we're in this hole where there's you have this booming development, this neighborhood out here, and there's little to no public transportation available, and if so, it's very little. So could you elaborate what the, um, sorry, county street design is and how they intertwine with the mass transit?
Great question. Yes, thank you for asking that. So the street design manual is a, is just that, it's a roadway design manual that that um, points out various tools and options on different widths of right of way. We talk about it with zip of right away, widths of right away, um, and different types of uses where they're located and what their purpose is. So, um, um, some roads would be very conducive to having sidewalks and or bike lanes um, in some mixture of the two. Now, how that intersects with transit is a great question. One of the issues that we have with our bus systems and bus stops is that they have to stop in the travel lane. So if it's a two-lane road and the bus has to stop, all the traffic backs up, right? So how this relates specifically to the roadway design manual is that it calls for where we have right of way and where we can, and we do have some of these on island. There's, um, I think there's a few in Pahoa, actually, and there's others around. But to move the curb in more and have a pullout, what we call a bus pullout, so the bus can get out of the travel lane, cars can continue to go while they offload and unload passengers. And then when the road is clear, they can get back on the road. So that's part of the interchange between the um, roadway design manual and the bus transit system.
Do you by any chance have maybe a map of where it was and where it's going to, maybe in, to start off, maybe in Hilo? And maybe shows progression throughout the islands?
So I don't have, uh, the transit um, maps that we have are in the back of the general plan. Um, and those are the, I believe, the existing routes. Um, let me see if I can find it right now. Okay, it starts on page, no, that's the roadway recommendation, that's not it. Thought we had transit in here. My classification. Okay, so maybe we don't have the transit map actually in here, because it, part, part of the reason is that it changes all the time. They cha- they change it as they, as they need to. I thought it was in here. Um, but it's not, so we'd have to refer to, we'd have to refer to um, mass transit agency in order to answer that question. Um, I know they have all of their rat routes online, um, go ahead.
It's on page two seven nine.
Two seven nine, thank you. There it is. Thank you. So two seven nine is map number seventeen. Hmm.
Map seventeen on page two seven nine.
Yes. Thank you, it is in here. This is the latest information that we have available to be able to put here from the mass transit agency.
This is correct, so what are they proposing?
So
If any.
Again, I'd have to, I'd have to go back and reference them. I don't know if it's, would change this map very much in that they would probably add various different stops and they might add more buses on the road, which could then circulate more often. But it doesn't necessarily, it it may not change what's on the maps themselves.
Okay.
So it would have more to do with their timetables and um, when buses are where and how quickly they can turn that over given demand.
Okay.
So again, I'd have to refer to
To request a presentation from MTA in regards to this?
Um.
I mean, it's part of the general plan, and it seems to be a real big concern for the community, this growing community. And to be transparent with them, is this something we could do?
We can, we can look, go, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think what, what the, what's happening is this is how the general plan works. It has goals, objectives and policies for the county and as far as our departments, as well as actions that uh, both the county and people would take. This plan under public transportation is putting forth objectives of what we would like to see happen in these different departments, including mass transit. So they haven't done anything relative to this plan yet, because the plan's not adopted. It has objectives and goals and policies, asking them, let's make these changes moving forward. These are the areas we'd like to see changes. So that's how this plan works. It's, it's like, it's, it's like a, a future growth um, directive that we try to follow when we make um, changes going forward. So that's why that would be a difficult task, because mass transit, if we brought them here, all they could do is speak to what there's, what they have now. They may be able to talk about future plans, but at this point, that would probably be a separate conversation relative to the general plan. Because they, they were, they participated in this, but until this plan gets approved, they really are, the direction they have is under the current plan.
And I would, I, I would add to that, the policy, for example, that says maximize regular and paratrendant services um, to the following, that's overall maximizing service, um, which is part of their directive based on this plan to, as Jeff said, um, to make that happen going forward. I happen to know they're already trying to make that happen, so they want to provide more and more service, um, but are limited with their budget and resources that they have available to be able to move some of that forward. But again, they are utilizing um, contracts with organizations like Roberts to provide more service than they have capacity to do themselves.
Thank you for both of your explanations and reasonings. I just, forgive me, I planning department, we went, well, the planning party went all on land use and how we're going to designate the land, conserve this, urbanize this, whatever. But the modern mass reputation, which we have a very far, a very large footprint island wide. I think it's crucial that, as much as we went big on land use and, you know, presenting what it is that wants to be changed, upgraded, I think the same could, should be done on the mass transit side. Especially for our aging Kupuna, um, our growing communities. I think it's only fair, especially if we want this community to stand behind us and support us on this general plan twenty forty-five. If we could be just a little bit more transparent, show some examples. You said that they're trying to make changes, okay, this is what it is, show me the changes that we've made since and then what we're trying to aim to and who we're working with, just you, you gotta be a little bit transparent with, with the community. I think that's all they're asking for, and that's what they want. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, oh, we, but no, no, that's, thank you, Commissioner Parent. Um, so mass transportation, so you said you get a large amount from the feds. So what's happening to the federal government right now, right? Everything's driving up, so what happened?
But again, I'm not the, I'm not the ma- I'm not the mass transit agency, I'm sorry, so I, I can't answer
Just wondering.
All the details about where their funding comes from, how they may or may not be affected, yeah.
I hope that dries up, it might. Um, and then they're going to figure out how they're going to support the system uh, independently. Um, so that's just something to think about.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay, cluster, uh, we seem to have, um, that kind of has a negative connotation to it. Um, I mean, I, I understand, you know, what you're trying to mean, but I, I, I think that, I think just like, um, you know, there's verbiage in there that it kind of leaves a bad taste in people's mouths, like stockholder, shareholder, cluster. Um, you know, I think throughout this, you know, you get a, some of the, the language um, leads one down a different path than I think you folks have intended. Um, that's what I'm seeing. Uh, so, and I think we do have a motion to change uh, shareholder, I believe uh, on the stakeholder, um, I, I believe we do have a motion to change that uh, to something else. Um, and I think that you know, some of this language like cluster housing. I mean, I don't think you guys are going to start building tenement buildings like in New York City. I don't think that's the idea. Um, but maybe just, you know, elaborate on.
Chair.
Yes, yes.
So, uh, we've heard from the public regarding concerns of the term cluster as well as planned unit development, P U D. This is, these are terms that have been in our zoning code for over twenty years. So this isn't new. If it was changed in the general plan, it would not change in the zoning code where the actual application of clustering and planned unit developments are applied. It's, it's a tool for development, and people or developers have the opportunity to apply that particular tool if they choose to. And people or developers have the opportunity to apply that particular tool if they choose to. It's not forcing people to do this. It's an option available to people if they choose to do that. And and if you read the purposes for planned unit development and cluster plans inside the zoning code. You'll understand what that tool does and how it applies to people that are doing certain types of development. It is in no manner forcing anyone to have to do that. It is a choice available to a developer or a person that wants to do that particular. Type of project on their property. That's merely what it is.
If you don't mind, Jeff, I would also add that the term cluster in this case is an industry, it is an industry term. In the planning field in general and development. And so if anyone's looking for those opportunities in a plan like this and they wanna do a word search. That's how they can most conveniently find it. The other thing is there are references to clustering such as industry clusters. A good example is um one of the one of the resort communities over in Waikoloa area. That overall resort community is technically considered an industry cluster. Because that whole community, there's housing in there, there's hotels in there, there's other golf courses and other things like that in there. That whole thing is an industry cluster in that case specifically related to resort. And so it's really an industry term that's been used for many, many, many years. In planning and overall land development that is just known in that part of the of the community. I understand that some people are alarmed by that term and but it, as Jeff said, it's been used for more than twenty years already in the county. Um and to take away that term in the general plan completely would would make it much difficult for people who are trying to do it. To find what they need to be able to do it.
Chair, if I might add.
Yes.
We uh. I don't even recall. I don't know if April recalls. I don't recall somebody actually coming in for a cluster plan development. Um if we have it, it's far and few between. I I am aware of planned unit developments that are coming in. They're very similar. Uh again, it's a design tool. What happens? The most recent planned unit development came. Um before the Leeward Planning Commission. And it was a case of a local family. That had a lot of archaeological sites on their property that they wanted to preserve. And they wanted to create smaller lots than the zoning required. And so of the planned unit development helped them to be able to preserve those sites and create smaller lots. Um and that's basically what it was used for in that particular situation. If somebody um a developer wanted to do a project that they wanted to put smaller. Uh you know, normally you'll see a subdivision. They just basically cut up all the lots. And they're all the same size and there's no design to it. It's just a bunch of subdivided lots. This allows the ability to create like a open area, park area. It allows for um other areas to remain open, forest area or whatever, even archaeological. But it allows that flexibility in design. And again, it's just a tool. It's not required. It's just available. Thank you.
Thank you.
I had a question. Are we required by law to follow to follow? Development terminology?
I would not say we're required by law. Jeff, do you wanna?
I I'm not sure what the question is. If you if you're indicating that you would like to change a term in the plan. Um that you you particularly don't feel comfortable with. That's why we're here. A motion can be made. Um the fact is is that by changing the term in this plan doesn't change the term elsewhere. So that's.
Duly noted. I was just thinking that with respect to those that may feel a bit like intimidated by the word cluster. You know, so I just, I wanted to add it on maybe in parentheses or something, just so it's. We as Kanaka Kamaaina can relate with the word. Um I have a few I just wanted to toss out there cause it's. The word cluster is really similar to a lot of um what we grew up knowing, like Ahupua'a, Moku, Hui. Things of that sort. So just with respect to, like I said, our Kanaka and our Kamaaina. Would we be able to adjust it in that night? Just I mean, we can still keep the word cluster per se, but slash or parentheses. Cause it does mean the same thing as Ahupua'. It really does.
Sure. And that's again why we're here, so that motions can be uh made and votes can be taken in. Um those opportunities can be forwarded to the council.
Thank you.
Yeah, just another um a comment. I think, you know, as we're going through this, like. Director Derr just explain, uh you know, clustering or the word cluster. Um I. If you would maybe put in some real life examples of, and I don't know if there's that in there, like. Very specific. Okay, here is an example, you know, that this project in Kona or. I don't know if there's anything like that in there. Um yeah, we have all these definitions, but. You know, I think it'd be. I think people would understand it more if we said, okay, this is what we're talking about, s- you know, and here's example A and here's example B.
Like a visual.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that would help.
Uh considering in the in the code updates, um sometimes a term doesn't mean much to somebody. But a visual really kind of identifies what that term means.
Yeah, um you know, people learn in different ways. Uh some people learn visually. Uh some people learn uh by reading. Uh some people learn by experience and in in doing things and listening. So um I think that would help an awful lot. Uh uh for folks to kind of understand, you know, some of these words or concepts.
I'm just fixing. This battery is running low, so I need to figure out the power on it. Apologies.
Um I think we will take another ten minute break uh while we uh re- reduce the uh the computer. So uh let's meet back here at noon. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
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 All right, uh we're going to reconvene the meeting. At uh eleven eleven fifty nine.
Wait, that's for us.
Okay, uh so.
Okay, so we're still on the um discussion part of uh of this agenda item.
Question, Chair.
Yes.
Uh just wanna comment, April. I think that was the today's section on uh mobility. Uh was really well laid out concerning the and wide enough so that the um future can. Um have a little better guidance. Uh I know they've talked about alternative fuels and different ways of of handling mass transit. Um because that type of industry, being in the industry of transportation moves very rapidly. You know, uh right now, there's several propulsion systems being produced by different manufacturers on different levels. Um we're looking at several different ways to address the issue, but. Um dealing with the initial, I could take them one by one real quickly, not not to bore everyone, but. In the area of electrics electrification, um which was a fast-moving. Alternative transportation will be greatly impacted upon the changes in the incentives that the manufacturers get from the federal government. Which would more than likely come into effect. this year, which will mean a reduction in the sale of EVs. Uh, EVs are not considered to be in our industry, an affordable form of transportation because they typically cost in excess of over forty thousand dollars, yeah. In addition to the fact that the Big Island has the um, which is also the problem with mass transit. The largest area, when you're talking about the VMT, um, which is your vehicle miles traveled, uh, and try to reduce the VMT on the Big Island. Um, several things come to play, but electrification um needs juice, just like gasoline and unfortunately, there is no gasoline, I mean, no power stations with the most critical point, which is the Kaheli Park on Saddle Road. Yeah, and working with the government and trying to have them understand that a concept takes a long time. Currently, there's only five, what they call um faced uh level three chargers on the Big Island. That can charge a car eighty percent charge in half an hour. A level two charger takes seven to eight hours. The, the one ten plug you get that comes with the car, sixteen hours. Yeah, and it's all based on the amount of voltage that comes through. Installing a level three charger took us two years several hundred thousands of dollars. And the rate per kilowatt is triple than what you pay for your house. Yeah, so these are, these are the small things they don't tell you about. So electrification is not what we consider in the transportation field an affordable alternative because now I'll touch on mass transit. Mass transit works in high density areas, not in low density areas. Referencing, uh, April does a good job in referencing the VMT. Unfortunately, the third component, what we discussed today was affordable housing. That doesn't happen in Hilo. We all know it's moving out to Ocean View in the Kona side and Puna on the Hilo side. That is not two miles away. Yeah. So that issue that comes about when you're talking about, and I'll go back, sorry to skip ahead, but mass transit, there is no easy solution. Um, ridership cost per mile, cost per, um, however they measure mass transit, none of it makes sense on the Big Island because not only that, they're not running on electricity. They're not running on, maybe biofuel might be a better alternative. But just don't follow the bus, you know, because biofuel has a great amount of smoke that comes from it, you know, so um people don't like that either. But the fact that housing, which uh this commission has done a tremendous job on, and one was Bill 122 on the ADU, addressing the ADU issue, allowing more units per lot, I think was a much easier way for us to address it because and April touched on it also in her presentation today. Also being in the construction business, I can tell you right now, the biggest problem we face in the construction business is not the actual cost of materials and labor and land. It's the building code that has crippled our industry. Triple the amount of material that's needed on a house, you know. Uh, the argument, you'll see it coming out a little better, maybe because of Maui, but um it has cost quite a bit more to build the same house I used to build five years ago, three years ago. Because the code keeps changing, you know, requiring more material. I understand that, you know, to a certain degree, um, you need more hardware. You need to sheet the roof, you need to do this, you need to do that, but it's not creating affordable housing. Yeah, it's creating a, um, what I'd say, um, it, it's causing a push-pull situation where it's making things way more affordable, I mean, way more costly, not affordable, that pushing pricing up. So um, as we've tried to address some of these issues, and that's why I will end by just saying that um, April's and her team, I think, have given us a wider berth in this general plan. And I know it's hard to go through a a long document and, and trying to understand it and what is this and what is that and why are we doing it? But it's, it's, it's written well enough that it'll change and things will change it as well. And um, it's not really made to be super specific, but it's just giving us what I say, the guiding light and moving into areas of what's more important, uh, as I was explaining to a friend of mine that we don't want a hotel down in Keokah. You know, just today's paper was, was, was perfect. What this planning commission did just a few months ago was turned down a very large development for the one fact that we were afraid and we knew it was going to happen, which was going to put more bacteria into the water. And today's paper, exactly what they talked about that, you know? Um, so we're trying to use, uh, as, uh, April, you and your team, a more common sense approach on pushing these things forward. So it's not like we don't hear, it's not like we're just um, not paying attention, but we're trying to address the issues that are what we consider to be critical to all of us. Thank you, Jer.
Thank you, Commissioner Dulus. We have any other questions? Comments, discussions? I think, um, you know, I think affordable housing, uh, like Commissioner Dulus was saying, it's, I don't know how affordable it is out here. Um, and, you know, in the past, uh, uh, on being, being a commissioner, you know, that comes up a lot. Affordable housing, people with um big developments, you know, they have to, you know, are they going to put so much in affordable housing? But what is affordable out here? I mean, what is affordable? Um, you know, affordable housing on, you know, median housing on a wall is like a million dollars, you know, so uh, that, that's a tough one and, and I would agree with Commissioner Dulus that, uh, it's, it, it just takes a, a long time, uh, and it's very expensive to build, to build a house in a climate that, uh, you really don't need much. I mean, let's face it. I mean, we have these houses in Hilo that are a hundred years old, single wall. I've never seen one before and I lived one in Papiko. The thing was a hundred years old. Uh, it was fine. Um, I don't know how it was put together, but it was still there. So it seems to me that, you know, we've just, you know, we keep piling on stuff that is not specific to our state. Our state is very unique, right? Uh, and I think we got to tailor stuff specific not only to the state, but to our county, because our county is unlike any other county in the state. Um, and so, you know, I think, I, I think that things have to be you know, tailored more. You know, like, uh, Commissioner Perrin said, uh, you know, maybe put in some Hawaiian language, right? Cluster and then you could have a hyphen or a slash, you know, so folks can uh, kind of relate with that a little bit more. Uh, and, and I, I think a lot of that, uh, you know, I think that would go a long way, in my opinion. Anything else?
Oh, no, I don't, I don't disagree. I think that'll make it more unique. Um, I think the um references as April and her team have done in the front, um, can easily reference that this, I'll, I'll give you an example, what we talked about earlier, instead of using the word stakeholder, but they can say that we don't use stakeholder, we use this word in the glossary section. Uh, the problem, I think that as the director have said is that they don't, they don't plan to change it, but I think for the general plan, it's, I think that'll be a nice touch. So as a suggestion, I think that was already made, right?
Yes.
That's fine. Thank.
Yeah, and I think that is, uh, I think that is a good suggestion. Do we need to, does that need a motion or not? If we wanted to do that? Okay, um, so, uh, we're at the end of our time for today. Um, we are going to convene tomorrow if, if we have quorum. Okay, uh, so I think we still have some more um talking to do, and I think there's probably some motions uh that we're going to come up with uh for tomorrow's meeting. Could I have a motion to end? Do I need a motion?
Chair, can we get a motion for a continuance of today's meeting to tomorrow at nine AM?
A motion for continuance of today's meeting to tomorrow, February 7th at nine thirty? Nine AM here.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, uh, any discussion? If no discussion, uh, everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so we will convene uh with the general plan, 2045, tomorrow at nine o'clock. Thank you, everyone, for coming and participating in this very important uh document. Thank you.
Please note the closed captions transcripts will be terminated shortly, and those who wish to save the transcript should do so now.